Different than the others that you might have heard about. I have like sinkholes in my yard. My yard seems to be shifting. I'm not sure what this is from or, you know, if it's connected to the problems with the ditches and the drainage and the flooding or not. But so that is probably the main thing that I wanted to say today. I understand that there's an engineering study that still has to be approved. And that is on the top of my list of what I would like to see done because I would like to know what is going on. You know, I'm the kind of person, good or bad, I just want to know. Because I am on my own. I have no idea how to approach this or, you know, work on it myself. So what else? Repaving still set for spring 2026, is that true? Or? So here's another thing. At the last meeting, I noticed we were talking some about did we have an HOA? So we don't in our section, the older section. The newer development, let's see, we're Walnut Court. We do not have an HOA. I bought the house in 2022. That's when I moved here and I bought the house with no HOA. So the roads apparently have never been repaved. And in those three years, I have watched the roads degrade. I mean, this isn't like they were bad when I moved in here. They have really changed in this short period of time. So let's see, next on my list is I heard people talking about I pay my taxes. Well, that is one of my points as well, but not just that I pay my taxes, but that there was this incredibly huge increase in my tax. It more than doubled. It went way up there. And, you know, that's based on the value of your home. Well, the value of my home, I don't feel secure about with these issues. You know, with the water problems, the ditches, the drainage, the roads. So if we cannot get something going, I don't, I mean, can we reevaluate the taxes? All right. I want to know if Walnut Court is in a flood zone. I heard that at the last meeting as well. And I'm not sure, again, I'm not aware of it being a flood zone. I, yeah. So maybe that's the other neighborhood that's in a flood zone. It was mentioned at the last meeting and there's talk about it. So last thing on my list is questions about the drainage upgrades, improvements. Are, do we have a timeline? Is that something that's done, approved, or is that still a process, ongoing?
Could you specify your question on which update so that we can just take note? We just, we want to take notes. This is very serious. We appreciate it.
I don't have a specific, just, you know, I don't know. What is planned? What is approved? What is going? The only thing I really understand is this engineering study still has to be approved. So is there drainage upgrades approved already? Is that going to happen? Or is that still something that we're looking at? Ditches cleared?
Mr. Manager, do you want to give any information on that?
I think what Ms. Upchurch is referencing are the upgrades to, that were being discussed with Mr. White at the last meeting for Walnut Cove. So, and I believe they did make some of those improvements. The next day, he was out meeting with the builder and they had scheduled the timeframe for that. So I will double check, but it wasn't for Walnut, the Walnut Court area, it was Walnut Cove.
Yeah, I did meet with the developer out there and we walked through several of the properties and then we walked through the property behind Walnut Court. And he, I just kept persistent, persistent, and persistent. And finally, he was able to contact the builder and the builder is looking at repairs that they can make on some of the interest subdivisional flooding that's going on. So, you know, persistence does pay off and I appreciate you continuing to bring these things forward so that we don't forget about them. Because they are very important and we appreciate that. And thank you for noticing the repairs at Walnut and McLean.
And I'll mention to you also, I've talked with Bobby and about those repairs and I've been out there several times. Some of that's still ongoing and there's still some repairs that can be made right there at the culvert that goes under the road of McLean where it comes down from the, from the, right there where it comes down from the park, just before it gets into that culvert. There's some more work he's going to do there that I think will improve that area. So some of that's still ongoing, making those improvements, which I think one of those specific improvements he'll make is a, there's some drain tile that almost like there was a driveway maybe that was going to be put in at one point just east of the main culvert. And he plans to take that out so that there will just be a continuous ditch so that it can flow freely into that main culvert. I think that'll help some with the flooding that sometimes happens across the road just prior to the culvert. So a lot of that stuff is still ongoing. And with the drum cutter that we got for the excavator, some of the other drainage areas in town that drain on further down into that area can be cleaned out. But all that is a, is a process and it is high on our list and high on Bobby's list and he's working on that to try to make as many improvements as he can to what is existing. And then one of the things we talked about in the last meeting is in Walnut Cove, you know, that's not finalized yet. And so they don't have the top coat of asphalt on those roads yet. So what that kind of makes happen is the curbing is higher than the road because the top coat of asphalt isn't there yet. So unfortunately, right now, until that's done, it kind of makes those roads in that newer subdivision kind of become the drainage because the water can't get out of the road and into the catch basins. So as, as that development continues in Walnut Cove and they are able to continue on and finalize that stuff, I think some of that will improve some of those things, you know, as they continue to progress. So, you know.
You know, Mr. Lopez changed out his own drainage. I really hated that he had to do that. And I'm concerned, is that something I should be doing, which I cannot do it? Is it something I should be, you know, hiring somebody to look at? All right, so what about this engineering study? Is that, what's, what?
That's only agenda for, for our meeting tonight. So, you know, you may get some of those questions maybe answered when we go through that portion of the agenda.
Is that the watershed? Is this all part of the, in Little Turkey Creek? Is that near our area? So this project is connected? Okay. Okay. All right.
Impressed at your knowledge.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing all the research.
For listening, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks for being here. All right, next up, Mr. Tony Jeffries. Thank you for being here. Please state your name and address.
Tony Jeffries, McLean Street. First, I want to apologize for last month. I got a little emotional. And when I get emotional, I kind of get off track and I apologize for that. It's just I hate to see Eddie and those families going through what they're going through. I'm glad now the town, as Drew said last month, that there is problems, you understand it. So I thank you for that. Also want to thank you two for being on the Flood Commission. I think sometimes I may sound like I'm against it because I do get emotional. I'm not. I think it's great. One thing about the Flood Commission, understand it, that's future. Because you got a government entity trying to put a committee together and then figure out who's going to be in the committee, then figure out what the committee is going to do and where they're going to do it. So that's time. But in your thing in the paper, you talked about developments. And that's what I think is what we need to worry about right at this moment. That will affect us now is developments. And I want to, the one reason I'm here is that I was quoted last time as saying it was the county and the state's fault. And then that was all I got to say because my time ran out and I had more than enough time, but I just stopped. And it was put in the paper and I want to finish that. I don't, the county and the state aren't sitting in Dunkin' Donuts eating donuts and coffee. That's not what I'm getting at. What I'm getting at is the reason they're not doing their job is they can't. And the reason they can't is every government entity is shorthanded. Every government entity. And it's getting worse. And at the same time, we got this thing coming from the west headed our way, these developers. And you got these guys there at the county that are looking at footers, they're looking at screen porches, they're looking at decks. And then they get this plan dropped on their things, about a quarter inch thick of these developments. And they got a developers ready to go and they're trying to push these things out. I don't think they have the people of the man time or can put what they need to in it because they don't have the people. That's what needs to happen with this, when you talk about this flood thing, you need to zero in on that and why the state's at fault. You know, the county and the state are our checks and balances. They're our checks and balances. They're the developers' checks and balances. They're every person's checks and balances. And if they're not doing their job and can't do it because they're too busy, then things slip through. And that's why I'm so passionate. Just like the ENS with the state. A contractor has to have a card. He goes to class and I'll say it real quick, I'm trying to. He gets certified. He has a card. Every time it rains over half an inch, he's got to go out and inventory every piece of silk fence. If there's failures, he fixes it. But here's the thing also, because he's got a card, is that if he goes to the same place more than twice, if he goes to the same place three times and there's a problem, he has to come up with something new and fix it so it won't happen again. That's part of his classification, that's part of the card he gets. So that's my point when I go back and say things slip through because Eddie's house, every time it rained two inches, it would flood. Inch and a half, it would flood. This thing was repeated, repeated, and no one caught it. That's what I'm saying. And, you know, I know we got some studies going on. Folks, I had a set of drawings. I got a set of drawings. Tom White gave me a set of drawings of the whole plot and everything. There's a structure there. There's a structure behind, you may know where it is. It's behind the new houses and behind the Walnut Cove houses, the Walnut courthouse, excuse me. There's a structure. You go about 100 feet west of Eddie's house, there's a structure behind those houses. And I guarantee you, the engineering firm had intended for that water to come down from, from the top, come down behind the houses and go to that structure because there's no other reason for that structure to even be there. It's, what's this structure doing here? And what happened was, is that ground there, when it got cleared, no matter what, the water comes down and takes a right-hand turn and goes to Eddie's. It doesn't get to that structure. And that's what's happened. And now it's, it's kind of hard to go back now and fix it because the houses are all built. And it's, it's people's property now. It's not, you know, still in developers' hands. But there's a structure back there that was supposed to catch that water. I'll guarantee you, that's what was supposed to happen and it doesn't happen. And it's because I think that these people, these, these, our government system is too. Now, with that said, real quick, I think it's imperative, and I'm going to throw this on your lap because you got to come up with the money. I think it's imperative as a town, we need to have somebody within our town looking at these drawings and looking and marking them up that is a town employee or someone we hired just to look at them. Why do I say that? I take a set of drawings to the county guy, he looks at the drawings, where is this? Oh, it's in the county. Okay, good. He looks at, you know, the numbers are right out the door. If you got an employee looking at it, he's going to look at it and say, wow, I got skin in the game here. This is, this is, I trust this. This is part of my town. Let me take this out and go look at it. You know, and then it's a little more personal and I think it would help us and behold, for all these people, we're going to inherit the roads. Why do I say the thing about asphalt? One inch is not on them. I'm going to, I'm going to say something about your comment. But for two, it's only got two inches of pavement on it. That, when I built a road, when I built a road, I tore it up more building it than when it's finished and the public's going to run on it. I tore it up more. I run dump trucks over two inches asphalt. That road's falling apart. There's a place, I got pictures of it before they paved over it where it's falling apart. We're going to inherit it. It's going to be your problem. It's going to be your problem and your problem down the road. We can't do that. We got to have our eyes on it ourselves. We can't depend on somebody else. The greatest thing this guy did right here is when he came into office, what'd he do? He got rid of somebody. Who'd he get rid of? Let's all say it together.
Relling.
Yeah, because why? They weren't doing their job. Nobody was inspecting them. Nobody was watching them. That's the same thing that's happening here. The infrastructure aspect is the easiest thing to get left behind. When you build a house, you got electrical, you got plumbing, you got HOV, you got all those. So all those are checked off. When it comes to dirt work, you may get an inspection once in a while on, on the stone you're going to put down in the roadbed. You may get an inspection once in a while on the pipe. If I, if I'm an inspector and I got to drop something, I'm going to go to those houses that I got to mark off that people are going to live in and I'm going to let that, maybe I'll go out later and check the soil for the stone. I'll check that later if I can get to it. That's what falls through the cracks. We need to have our own people to do that, to stand up and go out and then take it, like you're saying, there's no doubt about it, the one inch of asphalt's not on it. But the problem with that is, no matter what happens there, all the waters go into the same place. Whether it goes through the retention pond, through the structure, out into the ditch, or runs over past it and out on the ditch, it's all going to what? One inch, 30-inch pipe, one 30-inch pipe. That's our problem at McLean Street. One 30-inch pipe. And the reason I say that is, why? Because the 30-inch pipe fails and the two 36s that are under Walnut, what do they do? They failed because the water was over Walnut there too, where you couldn't even see those two 36s. So there's where our issue is, guys. And I, and I think, I'm going to say one more thing and I'll get out of here and leave you. I thank you for the extra couple of minutes I've had. I thank all of you for listening to me. I thank, I thank Tom White for standing up. He did, I told you, I don't blame him at all. It's, I, engineering firm, I'll just leave it at that. But here's the problem with, Tom's going out and fixing all these yards. He's putting dirt in these holes. This lady has some things, baby. He's putting straw down and seed. If we don't go up and stop the water coming.
Yeah.
What's going to happen? In three years, you're going to be what? Someone's going to be standing up here saying, I got ruts in my yard. Where are they? Well, they're the same place they were before. We got to go up and stop this water. We got to go up and get this water going to where it needs to go. Can it get to the structure? It might can get there with a pipe, I don't know. I may go up there one day and shoot some grades on my own, just see if it can drain there. I don't know.
Take me if you do.
Well, we'll shoot some grades. But I'm just saying, we got to get that stopped up there. That's got to get stopped and then a lot of these other issues, I think, will get better. But I just, we got to do our own thing. We got to, you got to get some money. We got to hire someone to look at these drawings. And then you guys can make your own specs. Say, I beef up the roads? We're going to inherit them. A developer ain't going to care if he's got to put too much, two or inches asphalt on it, guys. He'll put six, five, he'll put whatever you tell him on it. And then you'll have something that'll last longer, that you're not going to have to fix on a daily basis. And then, yeah, so, oh, Pumpkin Festival was the best, I think, in years. I want to thank Steven.
Mm-hmm.
I want to thank everyone that was part of it, every volunteer, and I want to thank the, most of the garden club, those ladies. They did a great job. And I want to thank you guys for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And thank you for bringing up those extra set of eyes. Commissioner Griffin and I spoke and the TRC Technical Review Committee is something that will be adhered to on all future developments. So, thank you.
Well, that's, you know, that's the issue here. They didn't look at where the water, after it left that site, they didn't go chase the water and saw, see where it's going.
Yeah.
And that's the issue. You know, it, it was, it was doing okay and then you, one thing about, you got to understand, when we clear these whole areas, and Tom White said this, oh, well, I didn't do anything up there, I just tore some trees. Well, the problem is, when you take all this undergrowth, you take the straw, the pine, the undergrowth, the trees and everything, and you wipe it out, what's going to slow the water down? Nothing. And that's what these developments are. You got to control it. Well, you put it in pipes. Well, what slows it in pipe? Nothing. It's running full bore to that exit. And what happened was, they did all their calculations, they were, they were, they were definitely in, in, what's the word I want to use? They were legal. I think that's not the right word.
Within spec.
Yeah, they were within the specs with all their calculations. They were there. Or they wouldn't have got approved by the county too. So they were there. But the problem is, that water wasn't added to, you got to realize, water comes down north Pine Street, turns in front of my house, runs all the way down there to get to that one 30-inch pipe. That whole ditch line, yeah, coming into town, that left side of the road by her house, comes down the hill, turns a corner, runs in front of my house and goes to that 30-inch pipe to go under McLean Street. There's too much water for one 30-inch pipe. That's, that's it. There's the big answer. That's, that's the issue. That's why it goes over. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep working. Hope you'll figure it out.
We will.
I hope you got a committee together in a year. I'm going to give you a year.
Yeah.
All right?
Nash County passed unanimous resolution.
Well, that's to say to have a committee.
That's a start. That's a start.
I'm not saying it's not a start, but I'll give you a year to have a committee together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you for being here.
Yep.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is approval of last month's minutes. If all the commissioners have had time to review those, we can get a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve minutes from last month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Continued items, consideration of vacant buildings, ordinance, draft and fees. Commissioners, have you had time to review this and do you have any questions?
We'll give everybody a minute just to scroll back through it here. I know it was a lot in there.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the ordinance, I, not precluding the board's consideration of it tonight, but one of the things that in researching the fees and fee structures that I came across was a commercial building maintenance ordinance, which is altogether different than the vacant buildings ordinance. I just didn't have enough time to actually prepare that, a customized version for the, for the town of Spring Hope. So I'd like a little bit more time to mull that over and bring that to the board, maybe in November.
Do you think it's possible that we could combine those two ideas into one ordinance so we can cover both of those bases?
Yes, sir. I think that's, I think that the commercial building maintenance ordinance actually has a lot more teeth than just the vacant building ordinance, which basically just says board up windows. The, the maintenance ordinance actually has certain requirements. It basically means it has to be a rentable or, you know, usable structure. So it's a lot more stringent. So I think it has a lot more teeth to it. So, but I just need more time to work it up and then get it to Fields and Cooper for their review.
I'd like for you to do that. That'd be good. Like Eric said, if we could combine them into two.
Yes.
And then I think maybe we could even consider either appearance committee or Historic Preservation Commission. Some, you know, there's a lot of things for us to look at. So, yeah, if you'll bring it back, that'd be good.
Yeah, I think an appearance committee is probably an easier lift, Commissioner Griffin. Historic Preservation Committee actually requires the town to have a CLG status. So town staff actually have to get trained and usually it means a paid person to administer it. But also the commissioners, the commissioners themselves actually have to have separate training. Then we have to have the historic district actually surveyed, which is an expense that I don't know that the town can incur right now. Those surveys are usually about $100,000.
Let's, let's look at just the appearance committee.
The appearance committee is a lot easier lift, yeah.
Great start. If we can get a motion to table this.
Would need a motion for that to table it?
If you don't mind, please.
Yeah, make a motion, we table it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. New items, consideration of, now you have the vacant building, but then this is the maintenance code draft. That's the one you want to bring back next month?
Right.
Okay, got it. All right, consideration of budget amendment 2026-03, Enterprise Fund, General Fund. Ms. Finance Clerk, can you please tell us the information on that?
Okay, so the reason why we need to increase the water and sewer funding because as we're ongoing with our repairs and upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant, the EQ approves some repairs on a, on a supposedly emergency basis, but they would only pay for the new pump and not for the, for the, for the ones that were rebuilt. So now we need to pay for the rebuilt pumps. And it's going to be, they're about $20,000 a piece and it was four of them.
To rebuild it?
And the, and the, actually the one that they, the brand new one was $55,000. That's the one that the EQ covered from the grant.
Why did they not want to cover it?
Because they were rebuilt.
Could we have gotten new ones?
Um, no.
No? Okay.
Well, this was an emergency, so we had to get it done right away.
I got you.
If I could add some context.
Sure, please.
To Michelle. So we weren't sure at the time what they were going to cover and to the extent, so that many new pumps incurring that kind of an expense to the budget, if it was disallowed as an emergency, would have been a very serious hit on the budget. So we decided to go with the rebuilt pumps. The one pump that we acquired that was new, we were told by the contractor that it could not be rebuilt under any circumstance. So we ended up having to acquire a new pump. That was the, the one that was permitted. And again, these repairs were on an emergency basis. They weren't actually part of the initial grant.
I'll make a motion, we approve budget amendment 2026-03.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you commissioners for handling that budget amendment. Moving on to the consideration of task order with the Wooton Company for watershed analysis of Little Turkey Creek. And, Mr. Manager, if you'll please give us some insight on that. That sounds great.
So this, as I described to the board a couple of months ago, we asked the consulting engineers to put together a price for a full watershed analysis. And that gets to what former Commissioner Jeffries was mentioning, the, really having to study where the origins of these flooding events, you know, all of the origins of the, basically the water. What you have here is pretty comprehensive. It also creates a model for the town that can be emulated. This is the Little Turkey Creek, which is that north Walnut area, but it, that's a model that can be emulated throughout town. We also have flooding usually pretty extensively on South Ash Street and South Pine Street. And we shouldn't forget that because that, that area floods quite often as well. So it can be then duplicated there and also in other parts of town as necessary. So that's what you have before you.
That's fantastic. That's so great to hear. All right, so the consideration of that, did they provide us with a quote? Are we looking at whether to pursue an official?
Right, so this, this task order is actually the quote. So this constitutes a quote and a contract, all in one.
Okay.
So you'll, you'll note on probably, let's see, page 46, so it's down near the, the end of your packet, you have the schedule of fees for the various hourly rates. And then you do have a lump sum price. Sorry, my machine is not cooperating here. So, and that, that culvert area is part of the study. If you look at, if you all would look at page 47, you see the scope of work, scope of services, and the deliverables on the next page. and the deliverables on the next page.
So, obviously there's something we have not budgeted for.
We have not.
Would, would we be able to manage this and not put us in a bind on other budgeted expenses? It's a pretty significant.
It's pretty significant, yeah. An almost thirty thousand dollar study. Michelle and I have discussed various funding sources. It would mean taking, uh, all of the money for the park. Um, we also, um, uh, there was, uh, what was the other big line item, Michelle, that we discussed?
I know, water and sewer.
Right. So, there are a couple of different line i- line items.
And then take some from the, um, gen- from the, uh, general fund, too?
Unrestricted fund balance? Well, the, the, the general fund was the, no, I, no, hold on. The, the general fund was the park. That was the major line item.
And then take some from unrestricted, unrestricted fund balance?
No, no, we wouldn't be touching the unrestricted fund balance for this. But we would be going into the enterprise fund, the water and sewer.
And that's payable when?
It's payable upon, uh, receipt of the deliverables.
So when we can, they were marked as?
Probably. The, um, one of the things I discussed with the engineers also are funding opportunities, stormwater grants. There are some stormwater grants, and actually, some are, uh, from what I understand, funds from Hurricane Helene that are available throughout the state currently, and could be utilized for, so this, this is step one, and the grant fund opportunities would be step two. And then the projects themselves would be step three.
So by doing the study, it gives us a better chance of getting some of those funds and potentially help us with some of the things they might recommend.
Commissioner Griffin, you're absolutely right. It really gives us our only chance.
And we can, we can do this without putting us in a bind, you think?
Yeah, it, it's, uh,
You don't have a crystal ball.
It, right, and we don't have a crystal ball. It, um, it does make for a very tight fiscal year. The, we didn't anticipate the drum cutter, for example, this fiscal year, and, um, because we had programmed other equipment, the side-by-side that was utilized actually at the Pumpkin Festival. That was one of the pieces of equipment Bobby had acquired this year, so.
We had some pretty significant repairs on some other things, too, doing.
Yeah, so, we, you know, it, it puts us in a tight situation. It, it's not impossible. It's just there's not a lot of extra money, is.
But we would have some money left for unexpected.
Yeah. Yes.
And your recommendation as the manager from having reviewed this more intensely than we have?
Well, the, the, the flooding issue is not going to go away by, by wishing it away. Realistically, you need to get at the root causes, and I know we all have our own anecdotal experiences with what's causing the flooding and, but, you know, it, it, the, the person who's charged, the project manager with this project, is a stormwater engineer. He's got lots of years of experience, and I think that's the kind of person you deploy to give you the answers that you need. He's gonna look at everything in that area and put together something that sounds reasonable. The grant applications is a value-added bonus. Uh, make a lot of sense for the town. Uh, we have not done a lot of work in stormwater, I think. I'll take this board back to when, um, you know, you first interviewed me, and we talked, I think, at one of the earliest budget workshops we had about how someday it might make sense to have a stormwater utility, right? And here we are, uh, it, you know, it, it may be something, we're one of the few towns of any kind of significant size that does not have a stormwater utility. And, you know, we would be talking about a couple of bucks on everyone's utility bills every year, but that's something in the future we may all have to mull.
Well, and you know, we talked about, we are in a spot, we have a lot of drainage.
Yeah.
Comes through this part of the county, so, um,
Right, we're, we're at a couple of headwaters to the Tar River, and, you know, there are the consequences that go along with that.
So, I, I'd make a motion that we would approve the, um, watershed analysis.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, commissioners, I appreciate your consideration and dedication to the safety of our residents. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to the, uh, reports. Uh, wait, we have invert- event permit, uh, Antonio Tony, for the cancer walk. Mr. Tony, if you'll please come forward, state your name and address, and tell us about the, um, the event.
Michelle, I didn't have a chance to send, um, the insurance, because I wasn't wanting to pay for the insurance for the event until I get approved. Um, this is breast cancer night, and, um, I just wanted to get back to the community, to get the churches in the community involved, and just do like a mile walk around the town. That's it. Short and simple. I don't have a lot to say.
I think that's a commendable thing. I commend you for trying to put something together for a good cause. Was everything on the application as needed?
I never got an application, Mr. Man- uh, Mr. Mayor.
Basically, it's just, you just basically just need the insurance. So if you approve it, then, you know, I'll get with the chief and we'll do the route. It's, it's not that serious. It's on a Sunday.
There was no application?
No, I, I gave her the date. I just had to sign it. She can give it to me now, and I can sign it.
How do we do this?
Yeah.
Well, uh, out of courtesy to Mr. Tony, we included him on the agenda, but we never got, um, Michelle reached out to him on several occasions, and, um, he never provided us an application, but we'd love to have, for Mr. Tony to fill out an application, give us the details, and then provide us that certificate of insurance, just so that everyone can stay safe.
I wouldn't pay for anything to this town. I probably got like three thousand dollars in application fees from you, uh, for a parking lot. I see the brewery is open and their parking lot is not paid. It's not marked off, and you hold my application for two years, so that wouldn't be feasible.
Can I get it in?
It's at the end of the bunch, so if.
We could do a, a special call meeting or an electronic vote.
Yeah, if you, uh, if you print it out before we leave here, then I'll just sign it.
Can't do an electronic vote.
So just hold on one second.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michelle.
So that, that event, uh, permit is, let me, for the insurance is two hundred and fifty dollars. I'm not gonna pay two hundred and fifty dollars for nothing. I probably got a thousand dollars in here now, and they didn't even have a, a meeting for a build, for that, that bar down there.
Well, what we, what we all have to do, um, is submit the application, and then the insurance is always pending, because insurance companies won't even sell you the insurance until you get within a one, two, maybe three-week window of the event, anyway. And so a lot of the applications that come through, they're approved pending insurance, and then if the insurance is not provided within a reasonable amount of time, then the town holds the reservation to cancel that event. But, like with the Pumpkin Festival, we filled out the application and turned it in, and we didn't have the insurance. We couldn't purchase it until the week of, I mean, the month of. And it looks like Michelle is, is trying to help you.
I'm gonna sit down. I'll fill it out. Appreciate y'all, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I commend you for what you're doing for a good cause. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. All right, let's get some, uh, reports. Do we have anyone from the chamber? Okay, code enforcement?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. For October, we had a lot of things going on in the town. Myself and town manager, Deionio, did meet with the owner of three oh-nine Wilders Drive for a hearing. He has pretty much provided us with a detailed timeline of what he's gonna do for the house that had fire damage over there. So we're just gonna kind of follow up with him, make sure he follows the path. We did get a call about three thirteen to two twelve West Franklin Street, about two blighted properties, about kids going back there and hanging out in them. I was unaware that these two problems were down Franklin Street, so I went back there and found it, thanks to help with PD of Spring Hope. And we're gonna start the case on trying to get these two to tour down or get something done with them. Fathers following up on our blighted stuff, five oh-eight, fines up to thirty-six hundred, four oh-nine West Main Street, still twelve nine. They have cleared all the violations. We just need to give them the pay. We have stopped the violation fines for eight oh-four East Nash Street, Miss Vasquez. She has complete defense, as the town has requested. Two oh-six Hawkins still owes the town seventy-nine hundred and one twenty. We're still working on that, but if you look at the pictures, Mr. Bissett was able to go in and comply with everything that we told him to do, far as with the property. Our next ones we got coming up will be one oh-six Nash Street. We're still working on that. Well, that one's done. They already described it, and also if you look at, um, four oh-nine, three oh-two West Nash Street, they've already complied with their stuff. We're putting the car covers back on the cars. Most of them have been deteriorated. That's the biggest reports we have this month. I think the biggest one that kind of got handled was the one that Mr. Bissett had rolled in the old hardware supply. He tore down the building, cut a tree up, boarded up the property, and got it secured as we asked him to do. I entertain any questions from the board of commissioners, if you have any at this time, sir.
Attorney.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Sean, we had one from Commissioner Ganey for one ten North Walnut Street. Those hedges that have overgrown the sidewalk.
Okay, I'll just hear that.
Attorney. Uh, can you confirm if one twenty, the Bissett property, one twenty Ash Street, has been sold?
I am unsure about that.
Has it been sold?
I'm not sure.
Which one is that one? The one across the street, the warehouse one?
The, the hardware store.
Oh, God, I'm worried. I checked the task card today, but you know the task card is behind on updating entities.
Could you check with him and see if that property's changed hands?
We can follow up.
And if it has, that the new owner be sent the, the notices?
We can follow up and send an email out to him in the morning. Yes, sir.
Okay. Always important, the new owner picks up on all of the repairs, so. Thank you. All right, thank you for being here. Appreciate your thoroughness. Good to have you. It was great to see you at the parade, too.
Oh, yes, sir.
You hadn't lifted shades. All right. Next up, police chief, Chief Cant. Thank you for being here. Tile looks good, sharp.
Um, this month, we've got four listed incident reports, um, five hundred and fourteen total calls for service, a hundred and sixty-nine vehicle stops, two hundred and thirty-seven, uh, security checks, five vehicle accidents, four domestics, five disturbances, uh, ten total investigations with nine being cleared.
Thank you. Thank y'all for keeping us safe at the Pumpkin Festival. Not a single incident. It went well.
Uh, there was a couple little small things, but we knocked them out pretty quick, just, you know, missing children and things like that, but everything. And then there was a, uh, some juveniles that were trying to start a little fight, but we.
I walked up on that. Some, I heard about it. I walked up. It was some young kids. I said, "Hey, what are y'all doing over here?" And they all scattered, and some of them said, "It won me," and then the, then y'all walked up, and.
Yeah, there was a couple, a couple of small children that wandered off, but, I mean, they were located within minutes, so.
Yeah, thank y'all for being there.
I do have one additional thing, if anybody has any questions for me. I wanna touch base on something. Um, we go back to, uh, August the sixth for the flood. The vehicle that was swept off the roadway and the two people that lost their lives would be, uh, Lottie Austin and Raymond Evans Jr. A lot of you might know, a lot of you may not know, but, uh, Lieutenant Leary, uh, was still in town during that and responded out there at two fifteen. And, uh, when he got there, the, one of those subjects was still in the vehicle, one was on the roof pouring down rain. The, they, the one on the roof fell off the roof, went into the water, and without hesitation at all, putting, you know, anyone else's life prior to his and not even thinking about it, he immediately jumped into water to try to rescue her. Uh, unfortunately, they did lose their lives, but, um, I want to commend him for his actions, and I want to present him with a Medal of Honor and a certificate. Great job. Well deserved. Didn't want to go unnoticed. He's.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
By far a, uh, terrible situation, and immediately, uh, jumped into action. We all wish he could have had a better outcome, and he's very, very fortunate to be alive himself.
Yes, indeed. Yes, yes, yes. Glad to have you both. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, the manager's report.
Unless the board has any questions, I don't have anything additional to add.
All right, if we can get a motion to adjourn? Oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you. Thank you.
I trust your judgment, Michelle.
Can we write down the streets, just so we know? Commissioner Griffin was asking. Did you hear the route?
Give the chief about it?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think you're gonna approve it, um, subsequent to the chief's laying out the route with, uh, Mr. Tony.
I'll make a motion, we approve this, subsequent to Mr. Tony giving with, uh, chief, uh, approve the route.
Thank you. Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Motion to.
Yes, that was. Thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Thank y'all for being here, commissioners. Appreciate your hard work.
Uh, one ten North Walnut. It's right, um, North Walnut. It's right on the corner of Nash Street and Walnut. You know that front house that's down there? It's actually mentioned at two meters.
Normally do that?